First slide we have on our open session tonight, recognition. Recognizing the Early Learning Task Force. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to acknowledge our Early Learning Task Course. So, this came about a couple of years ago. And it came on the heels of the district administering their Early Developmental Index. And as you may or may not recall, kindergarten teachers administer this Early Developmental Index. And the index provides us with information about our children's readiness for school. So, we had the opportunity to report out our data and bring a task force together. So, our mission as a group is to basically look at our data, as well as make decisions about how we want to change outcomes. So, one of the things that we have learned with our last set of data is that we had several, we have had multiple children that were struggling in specific areas. So, one of the things that our task force had done is we built an action plan. And we identified five different goal areas. And each of those, I can go to the next slide. That's okay? Each of our goal areas resulted in a plan. So, for our first year, we reported out information and then we offered parent education opportunities. The second year, we added more parent education opportunities. And in addition to that, we added a new component, which was provider education. And it was all related to our EDI data. Our learning link today that our school readiness team runs is based on the information that we gather through the EDI. And I'm certainly pleased to report that we're going to be re-administering that particular assessment this spring, which will, which will result in a new opportunity for us to gather information. So, tonight is really about celebrating these folks. These folks have been instrumental in helping us deliver quality provider education, as well as parent education. So, I want to commend them. They are definitely our stars. You folks have really created a difference on behalf of our early learners. And I think one of the best outcomes that has happened as a result of us meeting together was that we were able to form a community around the topic of early learners. We have Ed. I'd like you to stand up. We'd like to acknowledge you. Ed is from Lake Shore. He has participated in every single parent education event that we've offered, as well as our early learning in services that we've offered. He's offered free prices for people and has really shared the goods of Lake Shore. So, we really value everything that you've done. Cherie Francis, if you would stand up, is an occupational therapist who works in the district. She's well as, as well as a private OT in our community. She's been instrumental in helping us create parent education opportunities. You will recognize Claudette Ahern, as well as Sandy Banditini, our school readiness nurse and our early learning specialist, who they man our, our learning link and provide supports and resources to a parent. So, thank you. Anne Hersog, as well as her partner in crime, Ally Rowley, the Assistant Director at Laguna Beach Press. They've been super instrumental as well in not only participating in our trainings, but being willing to host trainings, as well as change the information that they're providing to parents, as well as their colleagues. We have Cindy, who runs a private daycare. And she's joined us and is also working on helping us network with other preschools in our community. We have Lynn Epstein, who is a speech and language pathologist in our community. And she has, oh my gosh, she has not only done multiple in services with Cherie, as well as been just a, just a true contributor to helping us serve kids more effectively. So, we've really appreciated that. And then we have our staff members from Annalee's Preschool. I mean, it's just been amazing the work that you ladies have done, not only in contributing to our teams, but the work that you're doing on your sites. So, so I'm, I'm drawing a blank on names. We have Lisa Thomas, who's the administrative director. And we have Kareem Mananito, who's the psychologist and director. And they were just honored with an award from the Psychological Association. We have Cindy Newman Jacobs, who's joined our committee. She's an educator in Laguna. And she's joined our committee this, this year. And we also have Mission Hospital. So, we wanted to take a moment to just honor the work that we're doing. We appreciate the partnership. And we know that we're going to continue to be able to do great things on behalf of kids. We have a token of appreciation for you. It's a starfish. And as you try to eat this starfish, I, I want you to think about the lives that we're changing together and the power in community, that it's not working in our individual silos, but our ability to come together and really change what we do in Laguna Beach on behalf of kids. So, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much for bringing these folks to let us recognize them. I did some of the things when I, some of the parent ed night. I heard Lynn one night speak to the group. I'm in visit learning lake and some of the programs at the library. So, it's, yeah, I think we've really done a nice service to the children's community by reaching out and sense going to where they are providing more parent ed. It's always difficult, I think, as a parent to figure out what to do. And any assistance is invaluable as the children grow. Thank you.
In summer of 2019, we should be getting our results for our new administration. And certainly, I know that our learning, learning task force is going to be eager to see what kind of impact we've made over the last two years. And we'll clearly be moving forward with our next year's action plan. So, thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public comment on non-identity, non-identity IS. I have one card. If there's anyone else that speaks, still have a card out of the table. We have Sherri Morgan.
So, I wanted to address the subject of the board and governance and your philosophies. I know the board encounters voted and coming on. I know you guys are all hoping that it goes away. But I really, really have struggled the last couple of weeks because I think that there was an opportunity for the board to take a step back and evaluate and take a, take a stand for what your philosophies really are. Because the, the calendar was very contentious. It was very upsetting to the community. And you are an elected physician, a volunteer, which I have the most, utmost respect for. And I did want to point out that our friend Chris, Ted, I didn't pronounce his name right, had a great response in the paper. And I do agree, I think you all did a great job. I have always had the most respect, utmost respect for you all. The calendar is a difficult one. And it makes me wonder, was I invited on the committee to keep me quiet or to really value my input? Because as a parent and voting in committee, it, you know, how representative truly it was, I mean, for the community. Your philosophies, you have 18 philosophies. And your opening paragraph says that you are responsible for district programs and operations. You're shared by the entire educational community, with ultimate accountability resting with the board as the basic embodiment of representative government. So, I have to ask, did the, did the committee miss the priorities? Did the power of suggestion when the survey went back out generate the desired results that the, that the administration wanted? And are you really prioritizing the philosophies correctly? The 18 philosophies that are listed on the website discuss and highlight some of the following. That you address students' whole needs, that you have, that they have the opportunity to learn free from harassment, discrimination, intimidation, bullying, safe and nurturing environments. School improvement is a dynamic process requiring flexibility and innovation in a changing world. Dedicated and skilled teachers have powerful influence in student experiences. Parents and guardians have the right to be involved in overall development and education of a student. Communication and two-way communication to generate trust, respect, collaboration between board and superintendent, community, parents, and stakeholders. The calendar was such an explosive situation. And you knew that was going to happen. It was one of the first things I said, is to take the community's input to serious consideration. And this was an opportunity for you to take a step back and understand what the community really wanted and maybe come up with a more innovative solution. We still have harassment. We still have racial and religious bias on our campuses. And I know that you know what I'm talking about. We have parents complaining that Jewish holidays are not respected with tests and exams. And this was an opportunity for you to take a step back and really do something about it and say, this is too contentious. We need to do something about it. As a board, you were yelling at your constituents. And I know some of it was probably long overdue, with all due respect. And I understand and appreciate it.
Sure, you can finish up.
But if it has to come to the point where it's very difficult for you all to contain your emotions, both when the calendar was presented and when it was voted on, then maybe you need to look at, is it really the right thing? Or should you look at other innovative solutions to start the starting point for managing student stress? Thank you.
So, the other comment, public comment items not on our agenda. Please come forward then. Did you fill out a card?
No.
Okay, just please fill out the form and stick your name.
Hi, my name is Cassidy Morgan. I'm a freshman at the high school. And I spoke later before you had voted on the calendar about the students' opinion. And I know you guys have voted. And I was one of the students who, when we got the survey, was in favor of the calendar. Because I have friends who go to other schools who have finals before Christmas, and they seem to really enjoy it. I also was in favor of what we got for Thanksgiving. And I know many students were for that as well. And I came to a board meeting to sit on briefly. And I saw that the calendar had changes to it that I was not aware of. And I don't think the other high schoolers, middle and middle schoolers who voted on it are aware of it either. I was talking to a girl on my cross-country team. And she's like, and she said that it's going to be great to have a week off at Thanksgiving. But our new calendar doesn't include that. And she was shocked to hear that it didn't. So, I ask you to please let the students know what their new calendar will include or get their vote again. Because the students' opinion, I think, is very valuable because it is their school year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we move on to reports. And our first report is our student, our candidates.
As we are approaching the end of the first six weeks of this school year, students are, are working very hard to maintain their grades for their progress reports. Last week's homecoming festivities were success. Both parents and students provided positive feedback. Both the pep rally, game, halftime show, and dance. The football game was well attended and the breakers won 46, 49 to 46. Our homecoming queen and king were Eliana Arthur and Kelvus.
Tomorrow, DHS will be having school-wide testing for the PSAT and pre-ACT. Seniors will be attending senior day activities during this time, where they will be provided with extra help and hints in the college app process.
On Thursday, college roundup will be held in the Duggar Gym from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. About 150 universities and learning institutions, both national and international, will be represented. College roundup will be preceded by an early college credit opportunities presentation on library and an SAT, ACT blueprint for testing. Success presentation in the artist theater. These both will begin at 6:00 p.m.
ASB is working to bring awareness to digital citizenship and anti-bullying beginning next week. We'll be holding activities during lunch and break.
Elmore will be holding their annual blue blast on October 26th from 2:30 to 7:00 p.m.
And Elmore will also be celebrating a character counting on October 22nd to the 26th. This will coincide with October 24th being National Unity Against Bullying Day.
Top of the World held a successful back-to-school bonanza with their PTA. At the event, they were able to raise over $20,000 to support the school.
Tomorrow, Top of the World will be holding a walk-to-school event with parents and students meeting in the surrounding neighborhoods. They hope to exceed the 100 students who participated last year.
Unfortunately, Mr. Neal was unable to provide us with a sports report for tonight's meeting as he is preparing for his presentation at the state of presentations tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. My only report is, given this suppressing of the calendar, we will be meeting with the districts to establish teacher start dates. And that will occur next week. So, that's all. Thank you.
Well, first, I'd like to, in this part of the dyslexia study session, I apologize for that because I did have the privilege of attending that training. And it was really just phenomenal. So, kudos to everyone involved because we sat there and really learned so much. And everybody was learning. It wasn't like, oh gee, we were learning. So, I really appreciate that. That was a plan. Tomorrow and the next day, I'll be at the safety meeting in Carlsbad with Mr. Conlon and a group of other people. And I appreciate, again, the opportunity for the associations and staff members to be able to attend these events so that we really can contribute to the various committees we're on. One other thing for me personally, I did a, a tanned Golden Sion Award at Annalee's School on Saturday. It was an incredible event. We received recognition from the governor, one of the assemblymen, from our city council. I have a little line just because my daughter went to school there. You know, some of us, you know, in Laguna, you have a lot of different connections. In the CSCA world, I would just like to say that our survey went out. And it's very similar to last year's survey. But there are some more things added as far as the wellness, which is a great opportunity for some of our members who are not covered by insurance within the district to be able to go in and really see what's going on with them. There was biofuel testing done. And there will be more of that. So, very, very pleased that that health advocate wellness program has been moving forward. And as far as the calendar, we will move forward as directed for an MOU or wherever we're going with it. Thank you.
Do we have any representatives from organizations, School Power PTA, that wish to report?
Then we have, where may we report? Is there anything that you were? I did, the community coalition, Carol Woods, I'm sorry. If they, I gave all the papers to Victoria, so most of you got them. They, that's Senate Bill 11, 09, passed, and that was in there. And then basically, the bulk of the time was spent just discussing, you know, next steps, how to implement, how to get, you know, community. Actually, more of it was Michael can attest to this. Get students' peer involvement and how that voice might even be the best way to get some of this information out and, and how best to, to, you know, get into the schools and then also, you know, extracurricular things. So, it was interesting.
So, with all that, all that material we got, so that students would help to educate other students?
Yes.
It was like, how, how do you accomplish that? How do you get those students, you know, that, that, do you do it via class? Do you go into a health class? How do you find those student leaders that, that, because you don't just want to pick somebody. It has to be a passion. So, how do you, how do you get that? And then educate them so that they can then go out and tell their two friends and so on and so on. It was, it was interesting. So, thank you. I just had another PTA council meeting and everything was just going really well. And they're doing a lot of fundraisers and getting, some of them have already passed their membership goal. So, it's, it's awesome. Dr. Gloria.
Well, I should pass. We have a lot of reports tonight, a lot of items, so.
Everybody passes, okay. We have a physical report from Thurston, from Jenny Salver.
Do I need this or can I just like wave and? Is that too? I got what?
The silhouette video?
Yes. I'm going to show that tonight so that we can see that. Trying to get more views. I think the kids watching at home are going to. 10,000 views. Okay, so, thank you so much for having me present tonight. I'm really excited about the things that are happening at Thurston. I think we continue to focus on what the district is focusing on, which is continuous improvement, every student, every day, and building relationships. And I think a strength of what happens at Thurston is we are constantly evolving, pushing ourselves out of our comfort zones and, and identifying what is working and what we can improve on and make things better. So, tonight, I'm focused right now on continuous improvement. Last spring, we had our cast. And that's one set of data that we use as an overarching, how are we doing at Thurston? And it's nice to see that math, we went up from 73 to 75%. And each points that you go up is exponential. It makes a huge difference. And there's a lot of things that attribute to that. And I'll talk about it when I talk about math. But in language arts, we did stay the same at 81%. We had focused on writing on our campus. And we continue to relook at what we're doing and what things we can put in place to support and increase those scores. One of the things that we've done this year is revisit our PLCs. And we did this in August with a professional speaker. We partnered with the high school and kind of did a review of, of what PLCs are. If you know, at Thurston, we've kind of gotten a lot of different directions using a lot of different kinds of data. But it's kind, it's nice to go back and be at the basics. So, we have reviewed what our PLC norms are during our PLC times on Friday. Yesterday, we had a department chair meeting and we were talking about, okay, how's it going? You know, this is, we're talking about PLCs and essential learning outcomes. What's going on? And Tammy Vonaville said the funniest thing, and I hope she's okay now to share this, as we're talking like, how are, how's it going in each department? And Tammy said, the ELOs are fine, but the norms in the English department are really difficult for us to come up with, which it has been. And I think that sometimes we have been friends with each other in our departments for so long that it's hard to stay and hold each other accountable and not to spend that hour going off topic. I mean, it's hard for anybody to do that. So, I think it's an important thing to circle back around and establish that foundation for us. So, we've been spending time on our PLC norms. And then we share them out with everybody in staff. We've also been focusing on our ELOs, our essential learning outcomes. So, it's going back to the review of the PLC. What do we want them to know? How do we know if they learned it? And what do we do if they don't learn, if they didn't learn it? It's really important. And this is something that I think is difficult sometimes. Again, you have to remember, there are two of us teaching sixth grade math or two of us teaching seventh grade science. And it's like, how do you get away from your lesson or my lesson and talk about what we actually want them to learn over a six-week period? I think the beauty in this district is we can teach them however we want. No one's saying, here, you have to be on the same page or the same, you know, comments at the same time of every day. But we should have an agreed-upon outcome over six weeks, 12 weeks, a semester, that these are the essential learning things we want our students to know. So, we've been working on those during our PLC times along with the support of our co-seds, Jessie Rockman and Chris Nunziata, who are just doing an amazing job. In science, we are moving towards our integrated. It's sixth and seventh grade completed. We're focusing on eighth grade this year. It's been phenomenal. We've learned a ton as a team. They used to work in their PLCs that they wanted to work individually. So, it used to be like, well, I teach eighth grade and it's chemistry and I don't have anything to do with sixth grade or science. But the integrated approach has really led the way for the other departments. It's been a great model. The importance and value of working as a team together. It also helps align in the vertical articulation. This is what they're learning in sixth grade. This is what they need to know for seventh grade. This is what happens in eighth grade. The communication and what they've been doing in there has been absolutely amazing. And they spend most of their labs, when they kick up on block days, starting the lab with some sort of phenomenon. It used to be, you're going to do a lab, but we're going to tell you exactly how to do it. Steps one through three, you're going to go over, you're going to experience it. Everybody's going to have the same outcome. Now, it's like, you start with some really cool activity to get them interested so that they want to buy in, so that they can learn about the cross-cutting concepts, so they can do models of what they're actually learning and then write about it and explain about it. So, science has just been doing an amazing job. In math, we continue to focus, as we have transitioned over, that we continue to focus on conceptual rather than procedural steps. This is really hard. It's hard for the students and it's hard to teach. Instead of saying in a class like 2X plus 5 equals 10 and just telling them what steps to do, that becomes rote memorization. We're really trying to focus on conceptual. What does it mean? How do you explain it? How do you dig in and really understand it? Which will help in the long run with them in so many other capacities. But it's a difficult thing to do now. It takes a lot of time to revamp lessons so that they focus on conceptual strategies rather than procedural. Chris Nunziata, I think, said it best, that he, he does these lessons and then he gets, you know, busy or things happen or life or what happens to all of us. And then sometimes you go into that and you go with a procedural lesson because it's what we know. So, it's really pushing ourselves and holding each other accountable to this is what should be the standard. And it's also difficult sometimes because kids don't experience success as quickly as the procedural steps. And when I say kids, I also mean like the parents. So, it's like, okay, I, I wasn't taught that way. I don't know what it looks like. And what are you even asking my student to do? And why do they have this grade? So, I think it's trying to balance as we transition. It really helps as the kids are coming to us from the elementaries, more prepared and more organized and, and, and already have some of these skills down. It makes a huge difference. In language arts, this is our third year with our study sync program. So, one of the things that I am really proud about language arts, because each department is kind of working through their own areas, is I think they're really going to help us tackle our MTSS system this year. So, what they're doing is they have the content count. They have a great system curriculum that's in place. Then they, they're looking at their benchmarks at six weeks. Okay, now what do we do? And then in our MTSS at Thurston, we use a variety of resources for data. But I think we could dig a little deeper to find out specifically when we're talking about grades. So, for our MTSS, every six weeks, we talk about like, your grade in language arts or your, your attendance or your citizenship or the discipline referrals or teacher referrals. We incorporate all that stuff. But a grade in language arts of a D doesn't really tell us what that student is missing. And we don't know if it's just from homework or if they were absent. I mean, we don't have that understanding. Whereas this year, we'll really be able to drill down and focus. If a student is missing something specifically on that benchmark at the six weeks, it's grammar or spelling or something, right? And then it's like, let's go back and let's find, find an intervention, a data-driven intervention, which will support the whole dyslexia movement as well. What can we do to support those kids and how we can catch them back up? Instead of just saying they have a D, we don't really know why. So, I think we're doing well, but this is definitely an area that language arts is going to focus on this year. And then in social studies, we really, they have been, again, I think modeling after what science did. They have done an outstanding job of working as a team. I think they're finding great benefit in working as a team and together and where the kids are coming from and where they are going. That's growth for us. I'm really proud of what they have been doing. They are focused on the inquiry-based learning, right? Teaching the kids, which is really a common theme in all of our core subjects, to think critically, to think on their own, to ask the difficult questions, to go deeper, to not just ask these like level-one questions, but to give them time to process and think about what's happening. Social studies this year is focusing on these three skills, map analysis, chronology of events, and our sermon writing, which is incredible. And they're bringing this into like their daily warm-ups. They're really seeing that this is a need of our kids, that we need to see this as we build them and send them off to the high school. So, they're incorporating it on a daily basis into their classrooms. So, we hope we see more of that. Then we're also focusing on building relationships, which is what we really try to work on at the middle school. And I think this is something, if you guys all, you guys all know me, so you would know that I would be concerned. At the end of the day, a third of our kids still don't feel like there's a connected or caring adult on campus. And I have to struggle sometimes not be like, oh, I care about you! Because I want them to know that we, we, we're, we work really hard. And if a third of the kids don't feel that, then we need to change up the way we're working. Because something's not right, not happening the way it should be. So, one of the things that we did is tried to envision something that looks different on our campus this year. To kind of talk same with what you were just saying, kind of, our web is where everyone belongs. It's the middle school version of Link. So, we're really trying to create a culture where we are providing leadership opportunities for our students on our campus in, in a bigger group of kids, right? So, really trying to find those hidden kids that can be leaders, give them opportunities to lead, and then showcase them for other kids on our campus through positive, actionable things that we can do on our campus. This is one of the things that we did. Our web leaders are, it's our leadership class, our ASB, and our pals. So, we pulled them together. There's about 60 kids. And we're trying to do more activities as a group so it becomes very visible on campus. So, this is what we did during the first three ESPs. Those web leaders brought in the sixth graders, talked to them. The first time was about how to get on Ares, how to check this, how to check that. The second time they met, they reviewed some other things. The third time they met, they talked about Science Camp. And what was really cool by this third meeting, some of the web leaders were coming in with their own PowerPoints to help the kids. So, instead of us being so. So instead of us being so specific on what, we kind of let them just go with it, and it was far better than what we could have prepared our client, which I think is really cool. Another thing that we're doing this year are our Web Wednesdays. I look over at Dr. Keller because I just feel the need to share. Sorry. So our Web Wednesdays are gonna be the last Wednesday of every month. It's during lunchtime, and the whole idea is it's a voluntary opportunity for everybody but to connect with a student and participate in something during lunch. So our first one was a ping-pong tournament. And we had forty staff members with forty students. They had, they got to invite a staff member to participate. And Dr. Keller came and played with one of our eighth graders. And I gotta be honest, there's a picture of him like leaning over the eighth grader to score the point, and he... A little assertive, but the good news is, he's in the finals that we're gonna have next week, so that's great. Against Mr. Wade, who knew that Steve Wade was so talented in ping pong? But it was really cool, and with minimal, actually, input into making this event such a success, it ended up being absolutely amazing. And so we're gonna do something every month, but it's not good enough just that we did that. We have to find a way to tie in for the kids that are in the audience. So we're talking about having a pair deck where they could go live and answer questions. Or we do a live school drawing, which is our PBIS school point, so that like maybe three or four teachers actually don't get a partner, and we live, we draw it live so that the kids can come down and be a partner. It was just so incredible, such a great day. The teachers absolutely, the staff loved it. It was just a great way for the kids to feel connected on our campus. What we also try to do, as always, is align our efforts, right? Don't wanna do a million different directions and go a million different ways. How can we make the most out of what we're doing on campus to make it really meaningful? And we could do things and just check them off, but I don't think that's the meaningful way to do things. So what we're doing this year with our web leaders is incorporating our No Place For Hate. So this came out of last year. Lisa Brackes does an amazing job of two presentations a year talking about our expectations on our campus. When she did the second one at the beginning of second semester, and we thought we were so like, she like, so ahead of it, we thought we'd ask the kids at the end of the presentation to get on a Google Doc and go ahead and type in something that they could do to make a positive difference on our campus or around. And they did it. And we were like, these kids are amazing. I mean, they know exactly what to say. I mean, they're, our, our job is done here. We should have never felt that way. And what we learned is, while this was happening, we actually had an Instagram account making fun of people on our campus. And it was such an aha moment for us that our kids are very smart and very, very, they know exactly the right words to say, but sometimes it's that actionable thing that is hard to teach. And that's a hard thing to do in middle school, and yet we're gonna take that on this year, right? So it's not just, I know I need to say, help someone with a math problem, but what does that look like when, when it's difficult or when nobody else is around? So that is something we're focusing on this year. In addition to the resolution of respect, which will happen on Monday in social studies classes. So you can see, we're trying to blend and mark our web and our No Place For Hate so that it's actionable. What this is, is we, Ivy was involved. She's like walking by the office one day. If you're ever in my office, you see I'm always like pulling hand everything. Hey, what about this idea? Let's try to make this connect. So instead of doing the normal pledges on a piece of paper, we're gonna do them on wings. Our little feathers, I should say. So then Ivy's gonna take, because she has so much energy, she's gonna take in the back of our collaboratory on the big white walls. She's gonna make it so it's transportable or movable so that we're gonna have these great wings of different shades of blue with all the different No Place For Hate, the resolution of respect papers that the kids will sign. Then she'll make it movable so that at the end of the year, when they do their art festival down at the high school, she can take that down there. So I feel like, again, it's trying to connect the effort so that it's meaningful, that it's making a positive difference, and that it aligns with what we're trying to do. What we're also gonna do is it's inclusive. So what we're doing with our web leaders, we're trying to give them opportunities to be exposed to positive things that they can do on our campus. So on November thirtieth, we are having someone come in, and they're gonna learn how to do, build bikes in small groups. And it's a leadership, they learn how to, the skills, what they can do. And then we are going to donate the bikes to a homeless shelter. And then they used to, we used to take just pals to LaFaya, but that was a very small group, and only those kids were affected. But now we're gonna have these kids go participate and see what it looks like. We're gonna film the whole thing. And then the idea is the following week, they come back, and they present to the science classes. So again, it's that exposure to everybody. It's not just the sixty kids that will get to do it. They're gonna come back, they're the ones presenting to the entire student population throughout the day. Then the idea would be, as a No Place For Hate activity, to say, this is what we did. This is how we made a difference. This is what kindness looks like for us. This is what tolerance looks like for us. What are you doing over the next three or four months? Create your own video that's maybe two minutes, submit it, and then we'll do some sort of film festival where the kids can review it and reflect on it. So I think it's really cool, again, trying to make it a positive, actionable difference for everybody on our campus, not just so a small group of kids get involved. And then we talk about every student, every day. And I think this is important. This is a huge strength of ours at Thurston, that eighty-seven percent of our kids have empathy as a top-four strength. I mean, that's an amazing thing at, at middle school, right? So we wanna build on that to see how they can do it actionable. They're really good when you have a one-on-one in the office. It's got actionable things that are happening on, on the campus. And I think it's also important to note that zest and optimism, those are in our lowest, right, top-up strengths. And zest is experiencing one's life in the present moment as exciting and energizing. And I think when we start providing these students with these opportunities and these experiences that go beyond what they normally might have during their day, maybe we will see these scores improve over time. Optimism is expecting the occurrence of good events and beneficial outcomes. It's what we're trying to share every day in our morning messages. Did somebody see something kind that happened? Let's share, let's talk about it, let's, let's review, let's make a culture here so that we are all kind. And then under this, we have our video that we do every year. And Andy Crisp is absolutely amazing in putting this together, so I thought we would share it. I actually had way more parts to it. And then as he kept having everybody else do it, he kept telling me we were going in a different direction, Johnny. So my, a lot of my parts ended up on the editing floor. You can't be great at everything, so I'm okay with that. But it's really cool. Lisa showed this video when she did the V and Up Standard presentation in the PE classes. And she was so overwhelmed with the appreciation and the, the way the kids responded in seeing this video. So I just thought I'd share it as a closing, if you can, if we can get that. I just feel like the video is, each year, it's a great representation of who we are as a school community. And I love that the kids are expecting it now. It's like, what are you guys gonna do this year? How do we belong? What does that look like for us? So I think it's just been a great thing that we've learned on our campus. So that's my presentation.
I have some questions. So on the, well, thank you all of that, it's amazing. On the ELA, was that also, you guys were focused on writing? Was it, was it, were listening going to, when you were working on this?
Yes, we were focusing on the speaking and listening. Thank you for bringing that up. I feel like we were trying to do that for years. And as much as we were focusing on that, we weren't seeing the increase that we wanted to see. And then as we dug deeper, we were realizing that it was very few questions that were on the cast. So I think it is, it's not that it was for lack of any effort. It was just like, maybe we need to be going a different direction and reviewing other things. I think the writing is something that we're seeing in more, in each and every department. It's that critical thinking and that analytical skills that is becoming very beneficial.
Kudos for taking on the integrated science.
Yes, it's a great science department.
Well, and, and I actually just walked that side, you know, that, that backside of the gym in the morning, blew the gates open. And lots of times, there's all kinds of weird things sitting outside. I try not to touch because I don't know if it's, you know, like if it's a shamen or something. I mean, it's obvious what's going on. And also sticking to the math, I know it's painful, but, but it'll, it'll, it really is the best thing. And so thank you for being, you know, being kind about it, but also knowing you have to.
And on integrated science, when I was at back-to-school night, something I noticed that was, that was very different, was there actually science teachers in, you know, when they have their free period, they were in the other science teachers, like in school's class, watching her do her back-to-school night presentation? And I had never seen that. And I know as a parent, right, one of those where I do write around multiple kids, right? But I still didn't see it then, right? So I, I didn't realize they viewed it as integrated. It felt different, right? And they actually were experiencing it. They went into each other's back-to-school nights, even that. So I thought, I applaud you for supporting the, no matter which way they're building, to implement their PLCs and how they're gonna work together and allow them to, to be themselves, but expect it to be significantly negative.
Huge thanks to you, Jenny, for taking risks. You're such a great example for kids, and you try. You take things on that are frightening and you just do it for their benefit. And I think the student-to-student relationship and all the things you're doing can help but bring up the zest and optimism of your students. So thanks so much.
Thank you. You said you don't lack enthusiasm, too. And I just noted and appreciated because it will be contagious to your staff and your students. And you had this picture here, and the diet, you know, besides bringing the groups together, are you also trying to pull in students that maybe a teacher, you know, somebody that is reluctant to step forward, but to be found involved in some of those things?
Yeah, I think we're trying to encourage more students to step up. It's, it was concerning, it was a thought last year when we, kids didn't know what pals was anymore. I think they would only know it if they had an older sibling in this community. They really didn't know because they were doing their activities, and it was a little exclusive, and it only, they were only seeing it. So I don't think other kids were being exposed to it. And that's why it's time to do that. Or in ASB, we didn't have, we didn't have anybody run. So two kids around, so they automatically got the ASB president, which is, they're amazing. But in a school community like ours, I think that is something to be aware of and how we can improve these opportunities. We should be having kids begging to be involved in leadership activities. So it just means what we were doing, maybe we need to take a break from that. And maybe we need to look at these other opportunities that we can create to get kids involved that look different, feel different than what we traditionally did. And I think we're already getting that. Darcy Anderson is a pal teacher, and she's already had three or four kids. Can I be a pal here? Can I get involved now? That's exactly the kind of buzz that we want, right? The more kids that are involved, create a positive experience on the campus for more students to be affected. So that's what we're trying to do.
And I, I'm appreciative that you're looking at the thirty-three. Because I, you know, not just to say we have sixty-seven and can sit on that, but to seek out the others, because it's, that, as you said, that's a third.
Yep.
Thank you. Next item on the set calendar. Are there any items that, you know, that we can just pull off?
No.
Unlike the motion, please, for items A through H. Any public inputs on this set calendar? Any more questions? And then, we're gonna have you also voting on this. Because the lefty vote, everything, like, I did the checks the last time. It's gonna get into our new routine. So then, move the both, on, can set calendar, items A to H.
Yes.
Burgers, one favor, hi. Here's Flybo. We have three information items tonight. First is item sixteen, of the NIMBY, the highest focus group student assessment and assessment results for the twenty-seventeen eighteen school year, presented by staff on language and district Alcap polls.
Yes.
Dr. Lee Barry, take a look. It was fun. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. I'm excited to present this deal. Thank you for us, Dickers, for the members, cabinets, Lieutenant Deloria. I'm excited to talk about our student achievement data. We're gonna talk a little bit about the Alcap as well. Just to kind of get a big picture of where this fits into it. So a goal for the next few minutes is really to kind of, just quick look at those goals that we developed. Really, it's a three-year plan. We're kind of in the middle of that right now with those five goals. We're gonna kind of focus in on two of those today and look at some key data points. And then look at our process we have going on this, this, really, it's a year-long process as we develop and give it to our Alcap each year. So as you see up here, those are our five goals. We are gonna focus on these first two on academic achievement, as well as our college and career readiness piece. And pull out some key points. There's up, you know, if you look at the first one, there's still the social-emotional piece in there. We're not gonna talk about that tonight, but we're looking at some of the test scores that do align to this. So let's just jump right into it. So the first one up here is really our growth. Now, we have four years of looking at the time record assessments, learning balance assessments, ELA and math. As you see across there, that's, we're at eighty-two and seventy-four percent. Hopefully, it's that continuous growth. I mean, that's, it's, when you're reaching a high level like this, and this is students that are meeting and exceeding standards, this is something to celebrate. It's not easy to achieve at this level and continuously improve. So there's a lot of different reasons why that, we are that way, that continues. All these we talk about, you've heard tonight, you know, around continuous improvement and relationships in every student, every day. You know, in the instructional services department, it's around the professional development that's very targeted towards different things that we're working on. You've heard about dyslexia earlier today. All those things are very specific. We obviously are trying to get curriculum and resources that are, that really help our students succeed in this, but also give teachers the tools to be success, successful. And then really, there's another two things we've heard a lot, we've heard a lot this year on our MTSS systems, our intervention system. What does that look like? How are, how are assessments fit into that, to assess how their students are learning, to diagnose how they're doing? Is there a skill scale? And then this refresher we talked about around our learning communities. And that's where a lot of this continuous improvement happens, right? Is around our learning communities, our MTSS, those interventions. Because those are the work, that's what teachers are doing on a weekly basis, right? What do our students know? And how do we know? And what do we do if they don't know? That whole piece there really makes it incremental. So I'm just, we're still kind of looking big here as a goal one. I'll slowly zoom down into the data more. So if you look here now, we're gonna zoom down into the different levels that you look at here between ELA and math. And obviously, our goal here around this is building that consistency across our different levels. And so you, you see when we go through these, that there's, there's different levels, how they compare here to our levels. If you look at this next one, this is now the grade level. So you're digging down a little bit deeper, you'll notice, you know, these dotted lines here, like one is California. And where in Southern is almost double the average in California. So our students are really doing incredible work. They achieved at very high levels. So we do different comparisons there. We'll look at how we are in county, we'll look at similar schools that have similar student, English learners, look at other schools that may have similar students that have either low income or dysges needs. We do all those different comparisons. This one kind of looks at across our grade levels. If we zoom down, this one is a really important one. We talked about, we talked about the last presentation not being okay with sixty-seven percent, right? This is that same thing. So when you hear, for years, we heard the term achievement gap, right? So achievement gap is this. So here's, here's our average for all, right? So our achievement gap, if I was looking at students with disability, this is the gap. This is our gap, right? This is our gap, right? So if you look at the areas of this, this is in our Alcap, it's in here previously, you know, these are some really important areas that we're working on, around students with disability, with English learners, uh, students that are economically disadvantaged, putting resources, they're doing training around those areas. Uh, really look at these, these are kind of our, our larger student groups as designated by the state, the California Department of Education, uh, and how they're doing. And how do we fill that? How do we improve that and decrease, and decrease that achievement gap? And that's, again, that goes back to a lot of the work that you heard earlier today, whether it's around dyslexia, whether it's around the work with the, the science standards and the history standards, all those kind of tie into that, to this piece. So this is a really important slide, that we know we have a lot of work. We're not, we're not going to sit up here and, oops, sorry. Can I go backwards? Does this go backwards?
Right.
All right. Backwards. Got too excited. All right. Uh, so we're not going to sit around here, the data gets me excited, I don't want to tell you. So, uh, so we're, we're not going to look at this and be like, okay, you know, just, just like the sellers, we're not, we're not okay with this, right? Like, what can we continue to do? What can we do, what can we do differently? What can we do smarter? How can we personalize our professional, how can we personalize the learning for kids? Uh, all those are the things that we're really working towards as a group. So, uh, if you move into here, this is now digging down to another layer, down to what they call a claim level. So before, we were about meeting and exceeding standards and now, so this was just ELA. So it's broken down into those four areas, reading, writing, speaking and listening, we mentioned that earlier, and then for this assessment, it's just listening, research and inquiry. So a couple of things to know, you know, obviously, this blue part here is, is above standard, so kids are definitely above standard. There's only three categories instead of four for the overall achievement level. These are the ones that are kind of sitting right in the middle, like they're almost at standard, or just above standard, or just below standard. Uh, and then these ones that are definitely below standard. So although reading has a very high level, kids that are above standard, it's also our largest group of kids that are definitely not meeting standard. So when you think of the training we're doing around dyslexia, uh, the OG training, some of the work around writing at the middle school, like, that's, trying to get at this, it's all connected. And we do that through our, through our professional learning communities. But this is, you know, this is that piece of like, where does it fit in? Let's, you know, this listening one that we talked about earlier, right? That's actually, it's, it's, it is true, there's a lot of those questions, it's, the state has similar marks as us, it's a challenge. One of, one, one thing I've heard about around that is a lot of it's, are shifting from, you know, we've spent the last 50, 100 years doing a lot of direct instruction, right? And so as we shift our practices, the expectation for a lot of districts will improve for them. Uh, where students are doing more student talk, we're doing more collaboration, students are presenting more, whereas really a student-centered classroom, and that will hopefully improve that. And then our math claim level, so there's just three levels. This is backwards to me. So procedures, concepts of procedures, that's the math that we, certainly as adults, that's what we learn, that's what we taught from here. It's thinking about what we, the computer science presentation, that's what computers do now, right? A lot of procedural math, right? So we've really got to shift this balanced math approach. Uh, and that's the work that's being done now with, with a different setup, whether it's some of the work around looking at CGI, or was you, uh, UC, uh, math project, is really getting at this, because they end like math, we don't want to build human calculators, right? Like, we want to build problem solvers. And that, to do problem solving, you need this balanced approach, where you're going from problem solving to the conceptual understanding, breaking it apart, kind of actually moving to the procedural piece, but we're really doing the bigger piece. Uh, it's starting with the problem first and working our way down to a very efficient method or procedure for doing that. So, uh, a lot of the work in the coming years will be around conceptual, procedural math, and what's that look like? One of the challenges schools have faced for, since Common Core came out now eight, eight or seven years ago, is there's not a lot of materials that do conceptual math. It's not, it doesn't, those problems don't look exciting in a textbook. Um, you know, for years, you had these textbooks where there's 50 math problems. But those problems, to do a conceptual problem solving, you need like one problem and then a whole page to work on it, right? So that doesn't look so well in the curriculum when you're looking at. So this, in the recent years, what's happened is a lot, a lot of teachers are building this and creating it, picking it from here to there, and that's, that's a hard process. There's lots of re, more resources out now, but it's not like it used to be 20 years ago, where we adopted textbook and then we use it, and that was it, right? So that's one of the challenges that teachers and schools are facing with this, is to find those good problems that are, that, you know, math, if you talk to an actual mathematician, like, math is not fast, like, you'll spend days on a problem. And so finding those big problems is, is not easy. So that's, fortunately, it gets better a little bit every year. But that's a, it's ongoing that we're working on that. So, uh, so that's kind of a quick view of the CAPS scores. Uh, this is Alcap two, that, uh, our goal number two for the Alcap around college ready. So there's a series of kind of metrics here, or data points, that are around being college ready. There's a few more that are in there that are included, but these are kind of the, the majority of them. Obviously, we're certainly talking about, in recent years, around that UCA degree rate, whether students are ready to an eligible, completing the course that's necessary to go to a UCA or Pell State. This is a big one, that shows a lot. 50 or half our seniors are passing an AP test. Uh, it's a really big indicator into whether students will be successful when they go to college. They're taking essentially a college course, or a diploma in high school, that's, that's a, that's not easy to do. And so I have enough kids there, and this is a really good way of looking at this. The EAP, Early Assessment Program, years ago, that was this add-on to the CSTs, it's now just our grade level, this course, um, which is something that we're working on. And the ACT and SIT, our kids taking a lot more, our kids are taking this. Uh, these are good indicators to look at, but they're not something we set in a class and work specifically on. The skills we do in class apply to them, but it's not as closely tied to something like our SBA scores, or the courses you take by AP class, so. But they are good indicators, another way to look at it across multiple measures. Really, that's kind of the point of the Alcap, the dashboard, uh, so that we have these multiple measures without looking at one data point to see where we're at. So this kind of gives you just a quick look at that. Uh, just a couple of these I wanted to share here. Uh, as we look forward, and actually, this was, this was such a mention multiple times earlier, but when you look at these, whether it's the Smart Balance scores, whether it's AP scores, uh, I think it's important that, remember that it's a snapshot, right? It's a snapshot of what we're doing. Uh, it's really important data, we use it in multiple areas, we use it to start digging down and disaggregating, looking at different things. But there's so much more that goes on in our schools. So when you look and think about assessments, as we continue to build our comprehensive assessment system, you have these universal screeners, we talked about that with dyslexia, we've talked about this social, social emotional learning. You know, in some ways, the Smart Balance is one of our academic universal screeners that tells us a lot. We're looking at others, I go to high school, middle school, we're looking at I'm sell us, I was always looking at that. So it's a way to see where our kids are. And then, once we find those kids, part of that assessment system is that diagnostic, what's the skills gap? Uh, is it, do they need to work on their conceptual understanding around, uh, quadratic equations and patterns? Are they looking at different, or different things with reading comprehension? But really find that skills gap? And then the piece that really connects it all is around developing an action plan. So we have problem-solving teams within our schools, whether it's SST team, it's PBIAS team, the school leadership teams, they're making that connection. And so as we build this out, we're going to have more and more ways to really look at, like, here's where the kids are, here's, here's where the skill gap that they want to work on, which will develop a diagnostic assessment, and here's the intervention we're going to do. And we're going to do this for six weeks, and we're going to come back and see how it works, or four weeks, or eight weeks, or whatever it is. But that's why I'm building this assessment out that has these multiple layers is really, really important. So if you look at this, you know, here's our, again, here's our annual ones, we're smart, we're kind of more summative. Uh, but the teachers are working on, they're, they're a big part of this here, where they're working on their professional learning communities, and on this formative assessments, this common formative assessments. So when they're doing daily lessons or weekly or a unit, right, like the, the cell we're talking about, like, every six weeks, what is, what's going on? Do we need to do another intervention? What do we need to do? That's all part of this big kind of comprehensive assessment system that's got these multiple layers around looking at maybe from a 30,000-foot level, working down to the skills gap, down to the intervention. And so this is a big piece of that, but just know that all these scores are mostly fed over to the more summative piece. And a lot of the work we do every day is around those formative pieces that we do every day. So mentioned a lot of these next steps, uh, these are really ongoing. Uh, we've got, obviously, uh, the data was just released, like, the CAPS data, Smart Balance data was just released recently, but we've had access to preliminary data for a while. Uh, it's obviously incredibly important that we celebrate our success. As teachers and educators, we're so quick to move to the next problem, but it's so important that we celebrate what we do, and so, uh, the hard work that students do, that teachers do, that our school leaders do. Uh, and then we start to kick down. Principals are working with their staff and looking at these different groups, disaggregating it, and how we can help at different grade levels and different departments, uh, different student groups, whether it's students with disabilities, English learners, those ones, we need to go into intervention, those are those courses that have already happened and we're already working on these. So that's, that's the assessment piece, uh, going back to kind of our Alcap process, right? So again, the Alcap is a, is a three-year plan, we're in year two of that. And so, uh, we've done a lot of this work, as I just mentioned, we have our advisory to keep this, except as getting stakeholder input, getting, seeing where we're at, where our goals. So we'll look, you know, a lot of our different groups later in November, around what do we, what do we need to work on, what are the different things, we're seeing the data that's similar to it. But we see, uh, we'll have a survey for parents, students and staff. Uh, we'll come back, actually, in the January, probably more, maybe January, February, that, advisory too, we're going to go to each site, so we get more input from the parents at the site. Uh, and then we'll go back in March and kind of get closer to any, really edits or, to it. And we will bring it to the Orange County Department of that, they look at it from their level, uh, how does, do we have some best practices in there, how does it compare to other districts? Uh, and then we bring it back to the board later, late May or June. So, uh, all of those assessments along the way, the metrics, one of the things I put the projects to summer that I worked on was all the metrics of the Alcap. And goal one, I think there was about 35, 40 different benchmarks in goal one and many more in the other goals. And so, um, that's a big part of building out that assessment system, so we can measure those, not in June, but we can measure them throughout the year. So that's why this, this Alcap process and gauge uses self-work. So, that's the quick overview.
Thank you.
For your fourth or fifth report today. Any questions?
Comments, just, thank you for not being afraid to look at the data when it doesn't always, you're not always able to pat yourself on the back and say, wow, we're doing so great. No, we're doing well.
Yep.
But, but I think it is important to see, you know, that, eh, we can do better. And, you know, being honest and talking about that, so I think that's really important because it is easy to sit, you know, look at, oh, but look where we are according to, you know, up with the rest of California, like, nah.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep. Thank, thank you for holding both truths, but let's celebrate what we've done and let's work in the areas. And I agree with you that if it looks at it, the, those percentages are jumping right into that, but pause for a moment and celebrate the achievements.
Yep.
And, um, and I appreciate you, you providing the data in a way that personally I hadn't looked at before like that, so I want to, I want to think more about that. Thanks for really posting the comment.
I just had the opportunity to talk with someone who is studying to be a math teacher and starting to do student teaching, starting in January, and she was saying what you're saying. Nobody exactly follows a textbook. They're pulling from this place and that place, especially to do the problem solver. And that's so difficult when you're just starting. So she, I said, well, what are you going to look for then? She said, well, I want to find a district that has a good team because I'm going to need to rely on other math teachers because I don't have all this much myself.
Yeah. I couldn't agree more. I think the, you know, the, that's why the PLC part is so important. We don't make better, there's no research that says we make better decisions by ourselves. We make better decisions as a team. And so having that team, or, you know, that focus on relationships, the focus on our health and wellness is, is, fits right with that. It's very connected, so I couldn't agree more.
Well, I just, I follow up what Keta said. I, to point out the significance of the gaps and what the gaps truly mean, I, I'm appreciative of that, and I think a little bit of it, those students are in those gaps. And then at the end, this, as we go through this Alcap process, just do our best to let parents know that you participate in the surveys and give their.
It's really important.
Because we'll provide that to them, so they need to, it's good.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next important item, item 17, some technologies update from High Council. And that's a share. I'm going to. After. After. It's not as convenient.
Thank you for allowing me to present a tech update, a brief tech update. Uh, we're going to be a little over 10 minutes, so it's not too bad. And I did, I wanted to point out something that Keta mentioned, because I think it's really important, uh, to think about some of the ethical things and some of the, the how technology affects us. Because I really think there's a battle going on between, uh, how technology can dehumanize us by using our devices to distract us and using, uh, technology in, in, in ways that are, is bad, you know, with social media and certain things. And then, but I do believe technology can be used for good. And so I wouldn't be here, I would quit. Yep, I didn't think that. And I, I really believe it can. But, so my department and my team, we, we are focusing on some of the really good things technology can be used to, to accomplish and really humanizing us and making us more effective. And that's one of the things that I focus on and I really try to think about, because I don't, I really, as I get older, I kind of feel like I'm thinking of those questions more, like, why am I doing this? Why am I here? Why am I, why is this happening? And so I wanted to start with a short, a short version of a video that Van Lee did. This was a Rocket Ready project, and it is remarkable. And he did this with kindergarten folks at Elmore. And, um, he's the first classic, one of the first classified people to do Rocket Ready. So it was kind of a cool thing that we invited them along. I just thought it was a cool one to show.
In this society, it seems like everyone judges a book by its cover and starts at a very young age. We judge people on pointing to the book because that's what we see. We see people with physical impairments or sitting in wheelchairs, and we don't approach them because we're uncomfortable. Mary Lein had not, and sought to change that by introducing her kindergarten workers to Riley. This is Riley. Say hi, Rose. And this is my friends, Dara and Joanna, have two beautiful daughters, Riley and Bailey. They're both born with a genetic disorder called SMA, spinal muscular atrophy. In kindergarten, we start teaching kids the basic skills of life, how to read, how to count, and most importantly, how to play nice and make friends. For this project, our goal was to widen our students' perspectives. This is where Riley comes in.
So initially, I think I was concerned that the kids might be a little caught up by this or giggle, laugh inappropriately.
And as soon as we started the project, we could sense a change. It was like having a classroom at home. The students created and sent video messages introducing themselves.
Hi, Bradley. My name is.[1707.22]
Hi, Bradley. My name is.
They asked for questions.
What's your favorite movie or play?
And responded to her questions.
My favorite movie is Michael's Island.
And after a few months of correspondence, our kids invited Riley to visit the class.
See you soon.
Boys and girls, eleven, eighteen, I present to you the famous Riley.
So I think we can say it was confidence that the classroom visit was a huge success.
The kids were so excited to see Riley face to face.
Yeah, the kids introduced themselves. They gave Riley a tour of the classroom and the playground. They showed her some games. Riley held a Q and A session.
Question.
Well, I can't keep her mouth, because I, like, I, I have, I have muscle, so I, you, like, my belly is gonna break in my own.
And all of them are gonna be.
Auto vote from here on is that if any of our kids sees someone like Riley, rather than looking away in discomfort, they'll look them in the eyes, give them a big smile, and say.
Hi.
Van did such a good job. And so I think that shows kind of like where our heart is with technology and why, why we're using it. I mean, there's a lot of technology involved in creating that video and in connecting with those, that, those students with each other. And it was seamless. It was focusing on the goal, the ending goal, right? Not the, the tech as technology. So we're not teaching classes on how to use technology. We're actually focusing on a bigger goal. And I think that's. So. So this is, uh, this is, every year we do a survey called, it's Bright Bites. And the surveys, uh, third through twelve. And the students participate, most of, almost all the students, the teachers participate and some parents do. And it kind of reflects where we are in different domains of technology. This is the overall ranking, which includes connectedness, classroom environment, the use of the four Cs with technology. And it shows our progress from like the last five years. And it's remarkable what our district has done. We're at the exemplary level, and I think Jason mentioned this last time, but it's, it is really powerful. But it takes like all of these people to make this happen. And all these people really do contribute. And I think one of the key things, there's a few moments that maybe realized this was going to happen. One was with Chris Study. I, there was a moment where it was after, it was the first year I was here when we were using Google, Google Drive. And he said, oh, I'll just share it with you. Now, that seems like a simple statement, but that meant it was part of the culture. And so those moments are really important to me. Like when I hear the kids say, I'll just share it with you. That's really important, because that wasn't part of the culture before. So now seeing that progress is really powerful to me, to see that growth. We did a survey, uh, the National School Board Association does every year. They do, uh, they allow districts to participate in a national survey and they rank the districts. And we were ranked among small districts. Uh, there were ten districts that received this award. And we were one of those districts. And there's thirty districts total. I think the only other district in California was Hollerton. Uh, that they received a middle, medium-sized district. So it's a prestigious award and I thought, I just mentioned. This is really important for our, because this is what makes the teachers feel like they can do it. And this is why this is such an important topic. This is from the Bright Bites, Bright Bites data. It says, teachers reported that the speed of support for answers to routine questions is uh, within one hour, same day, within twenty-four hours, within a week, longer than a week. So the stripes was, were five years ago. So if you see the stripes, so if you can look at this, I know it's hard to see. You can look, you can see like same day, where up to forty-one percent are getting help the same day, fourteen percent are gaining help within an hour. And within twenty-four hours, twenty-six percent. You can see there are a few problems that may last longer than a week, because maybe they're technically hard to solve. But I think the, our support for the teachers is really what's helping grow, uh, because they feel like they can get help. So I think it's important. And so we have a great team of support. And these are some new staff, uh, new faces in, in the group, so I just wanted to mention them to you. You know, Brian, uh, Alice is a new tech period educator up at Top of the World. Uh, and Stephanie, you're gonna meet in a few minutes. And Carrie Denton is helping us one period a day for our computer science project, if you have the funding. And Joe Doe is, uh, up at Thurston. He's a support specialist. And then we have Leanne Harley, who took Jackie Parker's spot. So new faces in the department, really great energy and, and it's been good. So I'm gonna introduce Stephanie Gavas. She's our digital media and library specialist and have her explain kind of some things she's working on.
It's a big whole lot. I won't take a long time. So over the summer, some teachers from Thurston and the high school got together with me. And over three days, we hashed out a plan of how we wanted to handle research at both those schools, along with introduction to the databases. So one of the first things I did when I got hired, actually, was start the process for the databases. So California was awesome, and they provided us with six new databases for free. Uh, it's supposed to be for five years. Fingers crossed they keep that and we get to have them for all five years. If not, obviously, we would find another way to provide that for the students. But with the research protocols, the key was that we wanted to make sure that the faculty were aware that it wasn't me telling them, it wasn't the district. It was teachers who came up with the idea of the skills that we thought needed to be taught and when. And that's what the protocols are. I'm currently working with a lot of the faculty going into the classrooms and actually instructing the students on some of these skills. It's been really exciting. The other part that we did is the research benchmark. We just rolled that out, so we're just starting to get back the data. But it definitely indicated that we did have room for growth, and that's what we're working on right now. And I will be going through the data a little bit more, like, you know, with the fine tooth, fine tooth comb, if you will, to figure out exactly the exact areas of growth. But we're, we're discovering what they are progressively as we work through it. So I did wanna show you the, the databases. So World Book is not new, but the other ones are. And they're all, all multidisciplinary and they teach various, various things, but they're all, uh, multi-digital media. That's what I was looking for. Sorry. So they have websites and journals and dissertations and all these videos, images, and it's all pre-vetted. So instead of going to a search engine, which is the standard way of doing things, we're now pushing the database. So it's providing the students with pre-vetted information and the citations to go with it. So it's two things hand in hand, which saves time and ensures that what they're giving their teachers is allowed, which is key, right? Making the teachers happy.
Good.
That's all I have for now.
So Brian. Thank you. So earlier today, I was fortunate enough to be able to give you a demonstration of a lesson that I would do with a specific group of students. Uh, what I want to talk about for a couple of minutes now is the general overview of why we were, why we're doing what we're doing and what the state has, what their roles are for us. So, um, just as last month, or literally last month, the standards were officially proposed to the state board for the computer science standards. And they wrote the standards up into five settings there. Computer systems, networks and internet, data analysis, programming, and impacts of computing. And what we did is over the summer, we had a team of about five teachers get together. And we went through all of those standards one by one, not just the, the domains, there'd be each individual standard within that domain. And we found some very exciting things. What we found was that the, in the vast majority of those domains, those standards, we were already at least somewhat getting that standard just by virtue of the fact that we are a one-to-one district and students are using technology, you know, in academic settings a lot, which is really nice. We did find that in algorithm programming is where we were really lacking. That's kind of the demonstration, the lesson I showed you earlier today. And so to meet that, we're looking at a couple of different programs. One program we're gonna pilot is called TechSmart. And we just had a group of ten teachers finish a four-day training we just finished today. And it is, it's a really cool program that will take kids, whether they have zero programming experience whatsoever or experienced programmers, really kind of move them forward. Uh, here's an example of one of the lessons that we did. And this is actually the exact same code that we see in two different formats. One of the most strengths of the program, what I'm really excited to see used in the classroom, it is very differentiated. Each lesson has four different levels of difficulties. So for those kids that are experienced programmers, they're gonna get very limited, very little over-the-way events. And for those kids that are brand new, it really walks them through step by step, not only what each, each line does, but why you're choosing that line and so forth. And for those kids that are super advanced, the, what you see on the box right there, that isn't one of the levels of differentiation they consider. But if a kid was skilled enough, they could write directly in the Python code as opposed to using the blocks right there. Uh, so we just finished today and I'm really excited about getting that in the classroom starting real soon. And just wanted to share with you a couple of pictures of, uh, some of the lessons I've done with the kids already. This is a fourth grade classroom that Mr. Morrison was mentioning earlier today. And what I love about these pictures that he took is that they just show, they, this is the fourth grade on the left there, and then kindergarten lesson that I did. But I, I just love seeing how excited and engaged the kids were. And I, I just wanna say that he showed me dozens of pictures that he took, and we didn't just cherry pick the ones that looked good. I mean, the kids were really engaged in it and really excited. Uh, and for those left, for those, I've been able to get in, uh, a few classrooms for a second lesson now already. And it's just really, it was just fun to see their faces light up when they realized they were getting into computer science. We're just computers, yeah, we're still cool about it. So we thought, oh, it's gonna be even better. So we're really excited about what we have to move forward. I feel so lucky to be a part, to get to work with these, these folks. So it's fun. Um, just a quick overview, we do have a product called Great Slam that we're piloting. And I always, I'm just trying to get that word out continually for you as a, everybody here to use it. It's, um, so far this year, we had fourteen essays reviewed and seventy-one students get help. So we would like to see the usage increase. And so I just, a little two-second advertisement for Great Slam. To try to use it if you, if you need help. The four Cs, learning environments. I just give it, I just wanna give you a quick update on that and how we're doing. We don't have that many more rooms to finish. Uh, this project is definitely collaborative with business and with Ryan Z, Ryan Z, and Jeff, and also Mike Rush. And we really work together, because they do a lot of the demo and the paging and all of the physical parts of the room they work on. And we, I work, and Mike and I work with the teachers on the audio visual and the furniture and the collaborations part of it. So it's really a collaborative piece. The rooms left to finish, we're gonna be starting to work with the science team at the high school on electives. We're looking at, uh, there's a couple of special education rooms that need to be finished. And Top of the World in Elmore have five different grade levels to finish. So that's kind of where we're at. We had a really nice gift, and I'm gonna show you some pictures of those from Skillcase and Tanglegram, giving us two classrooms for free, which is amazing and very expensive, close to eighty grand. And, um, so I'll show you some pictures of those. We are trying a new, uh, project called The Living Classroom Project, where we, the room is a little bit more interactive with the kids. So the room might give the kids some feedback as the room develops a personality and students help with programming the room to do that. So we're working on that as a pilot. This is, uh, a room at, over at Elmore. This is, um, a third grade classroom. All the desks, she's actually going over the norms for standing and sitting, because all the desks go up and down. They're dynamic. So see, they had to work out a procedure for when are you gonna stand and when are you gonna sit? And all of that. So that's what she's reviewing. This is like the, the first week of school, first days of school. Uh, this is the same classroom. You can see the kids kind of enjoying the room. This room, uh, this wasn't a four CLE room, but I wanted to share it, because it's a brilliant room that Chris Study and Ryan Zed, Zed worked on. And it is a science room over at Elmore. Uh, notice the poles from the roof for power, which is a great idea. And just the room is brilliant. It's really clean and amazing. So that would be worth showing. This is one of the donated rooms. So there are nine workstations that all, the TVs come out of the table and can go back in. So this is Mrs. Booker's room at, uh, uh, the high school. And it's just remarkable. It's like it's nerds paradise, because you hit a button and they all come out of the table and you're like, so it's very fun. But she has some purposes for this room and it's just, she's really utilizing it well. So I got to be in there the other day and watch it, the action. This is a room, uh, at the high school. This is also donated. This is a special education classroom, uh, at the high school. And it is brilliant and it is just so comfortable and you just feel like you wanna go in this room. So it's one of the, one of, one of the most welcoming rooms, I think, there. So that's, those are kind of giving you a little bit of a glimpse of some of the four CLE rooms. That process is a long process. We go through the teachers, they visit all the classrooms in the district in, in a group. And then they work steadily on trying to figure out how, what they're gonna use their rooms for. So they have the buy-in to actually use those things in their room. This is, uh, our Rocket Ready. We have a three-year program with Rocket Ready. And just listing out some of the parts of each year. The differences on the third of this last year is we have, we're working on research. So Stephanie and I are working on the actual activities associated with that project, the game. And we're working on Zest and Hope with Michael Keller. Uh, and we're, the, instead of building a video, they're gonna publish an article. So that's the ending project, because it's a research component. So these fulfill the, the three main goals the state has for us for technology, research, presentations, and collaboration. Those are the three things that are over and over in the standards. So that's why you see the three years designed that one. So that's Rocket Ready. Um, just to give you a feeling for like how Rocket Ready changes the way teachers think is, it, you know, there's, there's this idea that teachers feel disconnected. Seventy percent of teachers actually feel disconnected from each other. And so we were trying to figure out like, how do we, that's not our district, that's general, but ours would be better, I hope. But we, uh, but we're trying to figure out how to connect them. And one of the things that we noticed is when they started working on projects that were outside of themselves for a bigger purpose, that they felt more connected with each other. And so Corde actually wrote to me last year and she said, hey, we, we're interested in doing this green ribbon thing, which resulted in a work for a lot of other people like Mr. Dixon. But it was, it was, the, the Colonel was there from her thinking outside of herself and Mr. Collins. But, um, but if the court, the Colonel was like, hey, I wanna do something. I wanna do something big and I wanna, I wanna participate in this. So she had that thought, and this is just a note she wrote me, so I, but those are. So I wanted to end, you guys last time saw an animation that Jason showed you that, that showed a project about the estuary, the Earl Loco Estuary. And it was stop animation. It was remarkable. This is the video that shows how it was made, like what was the process of it there. So I thought you'd like this.
Wait, a hundred and twenty slides?
Yeah, survived by a four.
Students were elated about this animation project. Students were excited to create a hand-drawn twelve-frame percent animated video in support of the Aliso Creek Restoration Project.
Talking about how, uh, it is important for the environmental community to raise awareness, because there are so few actively preserved wetlands that, uh, you know, it's really important that we can be able to protect these estuaries in order of the environment.
This project began by working with the Environmental Sustainability Committee. When our students created, excuse rising tides, a sea level rise educational installation consisting of three four-by-six-foot murals on wood panels. Data for the installation was created from the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, the California Coastal Commission, and ClimateCentral.org. Our lead goalie introduced me to Ed Alanza of the Laguna Ocean Foundation. And we visited the Aliso Creek Estuary. We learned about how runoff filled with pesticides and fertilizer draining from the inland development along the thirty-five mile watershed that starts in the foothills of the Santa Ana Mountains. It drains into the beach. When the sandberg reaches, weekly creates an unhealthy ocean environment. The foundation hopes to restore at least eleven acres of wetlands, improve water quality, and introduce the tide-water goby and western pond turtles, among other indigenous species, to the waterway. So our AP studio, two-D design, drawing, and honors art studio students worked in groups to develop a two-D animation of the restoration project. After studying animation techniques and styles, students worked in groups of three to four and created a storyboard. We recorded the audio, assigned audio clips to each group, and created each frame. The digital students scanned in the frames and reformatted the segments into Final Cut Pro and timed each segment to match the audio. Then we experimented with background music. At the end of the project, we were able to view our short animated film that shows how we feel about the importance of estuaries in keeping a healthy ocean environment.
This project, first and foremost, was frustrating. It took a lot of time and a lot of effort, but I think that's what makes it more meaningful. In my opinion, it needs to be meaningful, because this project, what it represents essentially is ownership for one's actions. And our actions, to be raised, have the way we've been messing with the planet and using our resources. So I feel like it's our responsibility to take ownership of those actions. And that essentially is what the Aliso Creek Estuary Restoration Project. Living where we live, that's really my obvious concern, because we don't have many forests or many landscapes that have already been built into housing. So this, I think, is very important to me, just to be, it's a natural.
Isn't that cool? Let's give her a little. And to do this, it's a bloody remarkable project. So let's kind of, I thought I'd end with that, because it's kind of what we wanna focus on, those kinds of things. I think that's part of it. And we love to produce. Thank you, Justin.
If you ask Keta's question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have a, do you have a comment on this?
Well, I, I know it's.
There's, for sure.
Oh, right. They have recorded, so.
I know, um, several years ago, when we first started, oh, sorry. And I wanna thank you before for letting me finish my thoughts. So I appreciate that and thank you for letting me speak. I know several years ago, when we first started funding technology, um, there was concern over how it was gonna be implemented, how it was gonna be used, what are the teachers gonna do with it? And I know, um, the first couple of years, you're kind of bumbling along and, you know, there were thick screens and that was really nice. But we were just kind of staring at them. And I am so impressed with what the kids are doing and how they interact, and, and they do Google Share. And my, I think Maris was second grade, and was, came home and was having a conversation with friends on, on, on Google and writing a thirteen, uh, section, uh, play. Because that's what they did in second grade. Um, and I, I, yeah, it's just, it's wonderful, and I think that, um, if our kids didn't know how to understand technology inside and out, we would be disservicing them as they left this wonderful community. And with that said, I think that I would love to continue to encourage you as we demonstrate, show our kids all the wonderful things that they can do with technology. That's an easy path for them to stay engaged and fascinated, and, um, to use technology for all the positives. And as Mike said, there is the darker side of technology. And I think, um, while it's sometimes to not focus on it is, is hopefully the way to go, it's not. Um, and as, you know, working with, um, Michael and, um, the LCAP that was touched on earlier, it is important to incorporate some kind of a program, whether it's with the drug and alcohol program in the health department, which I know my ninth grader is going through, um, right now, drugs and alcohol. And I don't know that there is a tech component to it. Um, but studies do show that the effect of technology on the brain, and, and Dr. Whitehead just mentioned this at his presentation last week or two weeks ago, um, it, the dopamine hits that is released with technology is the same as, as marijuana and alcohol. When you add the adrenaline rush, it's, it's getting closer to the levels of heroin. So our kids probably don't know that, they're probably not paying attention. Um, and parents that aren't paying attention or don't wanna know, probably don't know that either. Yet I see kids walking home all the time on their phones, not paying attention, and I'm pretty sure they're not looking at having a video. So it is our responsibility to make sure that we make them aware, and how we can get that in front of them is something I'm sure that the bullions of our, of our, of our administration can figure out. Um, and maybe even asking the kids and asking, you know, what do they think, and who do they see, and, and how are they, um, integrating technology? And how often do they see the negative sides of it? And what, do they even know what it looks like? Because it's real, and it's, um, that's it.
Thank you.
Do you have a comment? Your comments.
I, I have one question, actually. What, um, how, what's the feedback been on the Great Slam?
Um, it's been, for the, the kids that have interacted, because I get to see all the interactions, I can see that they're getting help. So, um, for the most part, it's been good. There have been a few things that the kids reported to us that, like, acquiring a tutor quickly, uh, that was one issue. But when we looked at the stats, it was relatively minor. It, there are issues with certain kinds of subjects where they're difficult to acquire the tutor, like advanced statistics or whatever, but all the core subjects are, are covered quickly. Uh, the time, we looked at the time, and it was about four, three to four minutes for it to connect. Uh, so that was good. Um, I think we, uh, we met with the owner recently and reviewed the feedback with him, some of the things I was seeing that, uh, that I think needed to be addressed, and they're working on those things. So I think we're working with them to, to make the product better, and I think it's, it's very helpful for some of the kids. I don't see why, because there's a twenty-four-hour turnaround with the essay, why you wouldn't try to use that? There, there's no negative to that, I don't think, for a kid, uh, to try to use the essay submission form, as long as you plan ahead and you're not doing the night before.
Always difficult.
Now, how do, the students might know how you access it, how do they access?
They just go to Beachport, and there's a link, it knows who they are, and it logs them in. The teachers, uh, when they click the link, they get to see all of the students' questions that the kids ask in their class. So it would be a way for the teachers to get, gather feedback on what kinds of things the kids are struggling with.
And when, when you started last year, did you have instructed all the students if there's some hassle in how to access it?
Yeah, and we're in the process of doing it again, yeah.
And then is, uh, resulting as issues so far, is that still heavy on first needs as opposed to higher needs?
It is, yeah, still heavy on first needs.
So they still plan to try to get more information out?
Yes, and actually, we have.
To, and also to parents, if they know it's available for their students?
Yeah, and Jason and I, I think we have a meeting scheduled with, uh, to go over this, the methods that other districts have seen success on. One of the ways that they've seen success is by giving the kids a challenge that they have to use the tutor to get an answer for. And then that way, they're using it for a purpose, and then, you know, you kind of celebrate that it is a success to them. So that's one of the techniques we're putting in.
Okay. If I went on to our website and in the search engine, right, we'll search queue, if I just put in tutor, would it?
Yeah, the beach port.
If you have to, I just meant like something so that, just one parent are looking for the tutor, or they're looking for the surprise.
Okay, I'll be interested. I also, I, 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 this is just a, thank you. When you first described Rocket Ready, I was like, this is the dumbest thing I've ever heard. I was seriously, I was like, okay, whatever. Ah, it's, it's amazing. Truly, what you're producing is amazing. Of course, you always play the one that makes the part.
That's not very hard.
But seriously, it is, and we all know how I feel about technology as a whole. It is, it is such a wonderful gift to let our kids see what they can do, and have our teachers be empowered to show them and help them with that, and I just, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for your vision, Mike. I would just follow up on what Kate is addressing. I think if we have projects that allow students to realize where their place is in sense, uh, in society and the culture, and the impact that they can have with positive behavior, that's, has a value right there beyond anything they might look academically, which we're really lucky to be able to. When I heard that student say responsibility for our own actions, we can get, if we can get students, by the time they leave high school, to realize that taking responsibility for your actions rather than blaming someone else is a huge step. So I think you definitely answered your question earlier, as far as using it in, you know, the ethical way and, and with responsibility. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, thanks.
It's a challenge, it's definitely a challenge. And I shared with Mike that, the response I, from something you had said, what you were sharing, it's like, it's like, you're in the dark, Mike, and you're now like, come over here, it's bright. I was coming, you were like, you're in the dark, right? And so it was so beautiful to see how it played out, and the fact that you empower adults to use technology in front of kids who they might felt had a better awareness of it, although they did not. And in a way that puts them all together to, to make a difference in their character, to make a difference in someone's life. Right, that, and that's what I get checked upon, is the fact that they actually, they're, it's real, it's, they're really changing people's lives. And that connection, I'm, is, they, you know, they'll forget things that they learned. Maybe not the jelly sandwich, and now, right? And all that, and they're not gonna forget what those, those projects are. And how many feel, it, that's gonna stick with them the rest of their lives.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and helping me present.
Thank you.
Do you have, uh, another information report tonight, facilities project update, um, Mr. Dixon and.
Oh, just, oh, yeah, I was screening too, Ryan.
Okay.
This is probably one of the more busy summers that I think we had over the past two years. And, uh, the execution that Ryan demonstrated, and I don't think this presentation will do it justice, but to have a successful project requires great planning, procurement, construction administration, and closeout. And every one of our projects played very well this summer. Um, probably about as good as it gets. And so the amount of work that you're gonna see in these pictures, I just want to put on the board now, not reflecting how many hours this poor guy is here all summer and prior to summer, because a lot of his projects take over here.
That roofing of Thurston, that was amazing, that bales.
So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan, do you, you know, some more questions?
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Thank you, President Vickers and members of the board. Happy to be here today to provide you a quick update on our facilities. I'm gonna cover, uh, three areas, uh, routine maintenance, uh, our site facilities, uh, projects, quick update there, and also an update on our projects and planning. The routine maintenance is done on a regular basis, some of the larger routine maintenance is done on a yearly basis. Those activities are planned and performed during the summer months when our schools are not in session. Um, at the same time, our staff is there, site deep cleaning, the inside, outside, and they've done a phenomenal job. Um, and I think the, the sites speak for themselves. Some significant routine maintenance activities, the highlight that we didn't complete over this past summer was tree trimming. You can see that in the bottom right-hand picture here at, at High School on Park Avenue. We also, um, rehabbed the turf fields, you can see Top of the World on the left. Not shown here, but other items that were done of importance was fire extinguisher and kitchen hood service. Uh, we performed carpet cleaning and the tile waxing stripping throughout the district. Um, we also inspected, tested, and repaired our fire alarm systems throughout, um, within the high school. And we cleaned all of our site concrete. And at the stadium, we, uh, maintenance and cleaned the rubber track and turf, which is also done every summer. And lastly, window, window washing is done on all sites. Along with the routine maintenance, we have, um, also been working hard at all the school sites on our facilities projects, the projects that are in the facilities master plan. Um, here at Top of the World, we have the HVAC replacements at the three thousand building. You can see on the bottom left picture there, some of the condenser units on the roof. Um, the admin office, copy room, and staff lounge were remodeled. Those were, um, challenging projects. We were able to fit it in and worked closely with the summer school staff to get it done. Um, there were some surprises along the way, more than we probably needed, and I only had to call Mr. Conlon, Principal Conlon, a few times to come out and find us some consensus on what to do with what we found. But you can see the staff lounge in the bottom right, uh, that's a completed picture of that space. Um, also, we did the kindergarten flooring replacement in those three rooms, we see that in the top right. Um, so those are some, some real nice, uh, facility, uh, projects there. Moving over to Elmore Elementary School, um, you can see the, uh, the HVAC, um, and that was a two-story building in the back that was replaced. That's the top right picture of the rooftop there, there are condensers. Mike Morrison touched on it, the, the science steam classroom, um, classroom fifty-four, that was a nice project for us, um, in, in collaboration with IT, with the AV, uh, and the furniture, you can see that in the bottom left. To the bottom right, we have our kindergarten, um, play area. We added additional shade structure there, the pyramid structure, and then to the left, um, replaced the fabric on the existing shade structure there. Uh, not shown here, uh, but significant project was the 4CLE classrooms that Mike Morrison went into depth on in his, uh, presentation too. Uh, we replaced the fence fabric on the chain fence that borders the school to the state park, that was ready to be replaced in the plan. Uh, we also did a significant amount of exterior building painting, and we rekeyed the entire facility. And that took a lot of effort and help with, uh, Principal Duddy over here, so happy to report on that. Moving over to Thurston Middle School, um, we have the roofing replacement, that was a very large project. I think we've, we've, um, had another successful year, and, um, we're on track to complete all that roofing there for the master plan. I think next year, the last summer with that. I mean, you see the bottom left at the admin building. We also did some upgrades in the main quad, um, with, uh, you know, Principal Salberg's help. We were able to place that bench where it was fitting. We also did some upgrades to the, uh, bottle pool stations with the filtration there in the top right. Not shown, and I was told to keep the presentation clean, um, so I was not able to show you this picture of all the sewer line replacements we did. But that was, uh, on, part, a big help of that was our, our district plumber, Peter Pedlin, had a big role in that. And so we were able to successfully, um, do some pretty big repairs to the sewer system in the cafeteria, go to Jack Raymond's floor in an area, tile replacement, and also outside. We did a lot of painting at Thurston, too. At Laguna Beach High School, um, we've did, um, a good number of facility projects over the summer, after summer schools out in that, that four, five-week stretch. The, the deck coating on the second level of the sixties and eighties was replaced. Um, what you see here in the picture is the stadium handrail installation, that was a project that you brought to us, um, told us it was a priority. So I was really pleased to be able to come here today and report back that, you know, the project was, um, completed, and it was, um, very, very well received, so thank you for your input there. Um, not, not shown, um, but other significant projects was the, the five 4CLE classrooms we worked on, uh, with IT on. Uh, the eighties and sixties, we did the roofing replacement there. We also did, uh, cafeteria cabinet replacement, um, along the perimeter vaults of cafeteria. We did asphalt repair down by the dugger gym and the track, um, landscaping, uh, rehab along Saint Anna's Park Avenue, so the HVAC replacement for the cafeteria, um, in conjunction with the roofing, and, um, some more exterior building painting throughout to continue with that effort. For our Laguna Beach High School Stadium Russian Source concession building, um, it is on track, tracking its schedule to be done on December of this year. We officially named the building with, you know, working with the, you know, our administrators over here, uh, Mr. Billinger and, uh, Dr. Allman, and it's building one hundred. So we have our seventies, eighties, nineties, it makes sense, it's building one hundred, so it's one hundred's building, so it's formerly known as Building P. We can start calling it by its real name now. Um, along with that, we are, um, we completed all the scheduled work in the theater for the summer. Um, we're near completion on that project. Um, and then the HVAC installation at the Artist Theater and the Dugger Gym is tracking completion. Looks, looks to be, is tracking the first week of November right now. So we're very close to having that, that project done, and it'll be exciting to, to wrap that up. At the district office, did a couple, um, projects, we slowly sealed and tracked the parking lots, we did some signage up, updates. Uh, we also did some exterior building painting here, and, um, working closely with, uh, Mr. Morrison, we replaced the data center HVAC equipment that was regularly failing, and, um, it was due for replacement, so that was completed. Um, projects in planning, our OCAIC, which is our school site safety assessments, those are in progress right now. We've, uh, completed two of the site assessments, uh, at Top of the World and Elmore. As of today, uh, we were able to schedule our Thurston assessment, so that's in the near future. And so this fall, we will complete all of our OCAIC site safety assessments. With, uh, Mr. Dixon's foresight, with the budgeting, there is budget earmarked, uh, for implementation of some of the prioritized, uh, mitigation measures that this reports provide to us. And we plan to, and we will be working closely with our, uh, district safety committee, um, to, you know, review and, um, or some oversight there of the implemented items for this year. So we're gonna be able to, you know, immediately make a difference once we get the reports back and start working on some of the items identified. So really good stuff there. Uh, the other project in planning is Thurston Middle School Field and Classroom Modernization. Now that we're at the tail end of our, uh, our, uh, building a hundred over at the high school, this is our next capital improvement project. And we are going to be creating a design committee this fall, working with, um, Lance Neil, our project director, and, um, and, uh, Principal Salzberg. And we will put together an RP, uh, and we'll be bringing an architect back to you to hire, um, in the near future. And that'll allow us to, uh, put in place a design schedule for this school year, eighteen nineteen, to work with the design committee and, and do our planning and design, uh, and get the plans completed, so we can, we can submit them to the Division of the Architects Office for a plan check period, which is still about six to nine months. And that will allow for us to go into construction, uh, most likely summer of twenty twenty for our current, so the master plan. So we're right on schedule there, and that's right on the horizon. With that, thank you for your time, happy to answer any questions you have.
So any other questions?
I have a question. How was your summer vacation?
I did spring break, and then I actually just went on vacation last week, so I kind of plan around the summer, that's kind of how the job goes.
Are you, how long that Thurston, um, field renovation or destruction or whatever is going to take?
Um, I mean, I would say the field portion of it should be the better part of the summer, possibly, you know, three to four months. It's really hard to know at this point until we actually have a design committee and do our feasibility and really define the scope of work there. Because there's, without a scope, it is a little difficult to say, but we're gonna obviously try to schedule it around the, the school year's calendar. And as much as we can do in the summer months, we will, at least do the heavy, but do it in the summer.
I have to say, I don't think, I didn't have any.
No.
Surround your neighborhoods, so it's key that, that you've been establishing good relationships and being respectful of the neighborhoods, since you did all of our work. So, um, that's much appreciated, but also, obviously, to get this much accomplished takes a lot of supervision, a lot of direction, so I'm sure that you would, we would.
We have a good team here, so.
We do have a good team, but also, it's really important to have sites that look like our sites do, because then it's just, it's there, and. And I'm assuming that our, that our staff, under, under the advice of their principals, really appreciate how much goes into providing them those places where they teach or where they work with students, because it makes a big difference. And I know over the years, I've definitely heard that from people about how, how well kept the sites are. It's important, so thank you.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
We didn't get, I actually got compliments. That was the nice thing, like, wasn't it, just not complaints, so how come? People were approaching you like, oh, it's only your birthday, because you're very, very, very complimented.
When I went into the science room at Top of the World, I mean, those, pulling those down, that's like a huge thing. The cords off the ground.
Yeah.
And we did it at, at the Top of the World also, because once you do one, you do the other.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate that. But they're very excited about it.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you. Okay, we have several action items tonight.
Our first item, nineteen, approval of resolution eighteen dash twelve, one billion act, kindness award.
Back in twenty sixteen, Dr. Harris at OCVD took this on as a challenge to all the school districts. And many of the school districts in our area have already taken the pledge. And I think this aligns really well with a lot of work that you've heard today from our school sites that I know are going on day in, day out. Whether it be the Great Kindness Challenge, that was something that the state actually put on and had a little competition last year and some activities. And our school sites were involved in that as well. So again, just in alignment with our kind of part of it, all their amazing work in this topic. I felt it would be a, a great opportunity for us at the school district to really reiterate what's went on in our school sites in the past revolution. I was even amazed, they even developed a kindness act, OCVD, so you can track all of your kindness that you give to people over the time, and it's both, yeah, it's multi-platform. But again, I just was talking to Dr. Harris about this at our last meeting, and he's just been able to comment the impact it's had here in the county hall, which is, so. Doc, do you have any questions?
Any public comments? Questions? Motion, so, oh, second. Any discussion? I think we've done a lot, so we certainly should pay attention. All in favor?
Hi.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
Sorry.
I circled it, not my.
That's good, now she gets to do the work.
Yes. Piper?
Yes.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Allman?
Yes.
Yes.
Item twenty, approval of resolution eighteen dash thirteen to observe Lincoln Day on February eighteenth, twenty twenty.
Thank you. So this is a routine item, appropriate calendars. One of the things we have to do is approve a resolution to change the observance of Lincoln Day. In ed code, it's required to be held either on the Monday or Friday, whichever February twelfth occurs. But you can change that with the work resolution, so we moved that thing into the midwinter break.
Thank you. Other comments? Any questions? So, second. Any discussion?
We just, we just moved Lincoln around.
You put that right here.
Call call please. Piper?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Normandin?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, approval of resolution eighteen fourteen to observe Lincoln Day on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Same resolution for the following year for the twenty twenty-one school year.
Other comments? Any questions? Any questions?
Or is it Washington giving their summary?
He's on President's Day, and President's Day we actually observe on the day, that's on Monday of midwinter break. So Lincoln Day is Tuesday, and Admission Day is Wednesday. Those are our three required district holidays that we have to ensure now.
I knew you had it figured out.
So, second. Any discussion? Call call please. Piper?
Yes.
Mrs. Normandin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Keep it on the way.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes. Thank you.
Wait, can we move forward?
We passed up.
And then item twenty-two, approval for Miss Overdrive Digital Library for implementation, integration of our school district in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand.
I'll, I'll do it.
You'll do it?
I'll do a question for all of them, so. Overdrive is actually something that, you want to try and public libraries, actually, most of the public libraries you use, I think.
I have, yeah.
Yeah, it's on app, you can download it from Amazon and access books through those, the libraries if you have a public library card. In line with all that work, obviously, it's our step into that direction as well. And that will allow our students actually to check out books on ebook platform, multiple devices, it also has, again, its own app that they can do at home if they need access to research books or whatever it may be. This will be more than likely a multi-year thing as we kind of get going. The nice part about Overdrive is, is you're not paying for the usage of Overdrive, there's simply the platform you find that can look. So we are looking forward to this and believe that it's timely, knowing that this is an area that we're focused on, which are our new area for this. So happy to take any questions.
Other comments? Any questions? Motion, so, second. Any discussion?
It just makes me sad, I like to look forwards and backwards in an actual book.
We're still, we still have that, and so, thanks, yes, we still talked about that, and I think.
Those of us who are old school.
You're not, though, stu-, students like that, there are some that still like the books, and so we want to make sure we blend.
Okay, that's all.
And not go one way or the other, so.
We're just not gonna, we're, we're.
We're not gonna do anything like that.
Okay, this access is really easy. Thank you, that would upset me.
Go, go, go.
It's a goal, it's a goal, only one way or the other, I know that there are books, some students like to free read books.
There's a tactile thing that is.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Always thinking, I like that.
Piper, excuse me, I heard, yes.
Sorry, pokey?
No, no, I need it. All in favor? All right. Opposed, carried, supply of. Thank you. Agenda item twenty-three, approval of deleting work policies fifty thirty-four, students with alcohol or drug-related disabilities, and fifty thirty-seven substance abuse policy.
I like that.
You know, like, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So on September twenty-fifth, this was simply an oversight, we approved fifty-one, thirty-one dot six. That actually takes this, these two policies in place. Again, with all the policies we have, these ones were, are not even in line with the jamming. So we have now everything in alignment, they just didn't get to them. So my recommendation is that the board approve to delete them. I don't want to let a second be a question, and then we already have a policy in place.
Other comments? Any questions? Motion please, hello, second. Girl, any discussion? Thank you. Piper?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote, thank you.
And now we have agenda item twenty-four, for member requests for items to next meeting, request for information or good or comments.
I just want to make an anecdotal comment about high school chemistry. They have those QR codes, they're amazing. I just want to say, as a parent and mom, my daughter can scan the code and see video of an experiment on homework she's doing. I saw them, it's amazing, kudos to them, amazing. Thank you, lowest stress in my house. Thank you for Dr. Weitman, that was a wonderful presentation, and it was well attended, so I think that's important. Also, the ping pong, didn't know you were such a wringer. Those dogs, I, um.
I can tell you're gonna be on October.
It was actually, that was great, it was really just one. It was really, okay, is it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Tomorrow? And then finally, I've had a, probably, I don't know, three, four parents come up to me, and this is really, probably, it's a site issue at the high school, and I, you guys will deal with it as you choose. You know, since we changed the way we've done the grade bump for honors, and so a lot of those honors classes now, kids are taking it for the intrinsic desire rather than getting a grade bump, they actually want to be there. The downside of that is the class rank. And I would just, I just would like you to think about, perhaps, doing, doing some research on whether that's really valuable anymore. I don't know how many colleges use it, I don't know, you know, if it's, if it's really, if it, if it means anything anymore. Since colleges have, they send your transcript, they, and they reweight everything the way they want to do it anyway. But I, I think it's hard now, because kids can go on the areas and see that it's on your, your transcript right there, you know. And if you're taking, you know, three honors classes without the bump, and I'm looking at you, and I'm, I'm not blaming, I'm just having a good. It, the, you know, they, if they get a B, but they challenge themselves, but they're fiftieth, sixtieth in the class, they feel stupid. And I just think that that's something we need to look at, I think that was probably a, something that we just, it was an unintended consequence of something that, that we did right. And it's just, I think, we always like to relook at our practices, so I'm asking just for that discussion. Thanks.
I agree, I think it would be valuable to have a classroom discussion. We need that anymore. I also, in thinking of the community involvement, I wanted to thank the La Papa, the planar, for doing the kids' meetup today. And, or, yeah, on Monday, and, you know, giving them all the planar kids and all the things going on in town tonight, they're doing night pinging downtown, and all the students' work will be admitted free at the Festival Arts, and that's, it's all great. We have one of the planar artists actually staying at our house. And, let's see, I enjoy going to the welcome back for the new parents, I saw Jan and Peggy there. And what I loved was, every parent I talked to was thrilled, they were so happy because their kids were happy. And when I asked, because I do, what could we do better, nobody could tell me anything, they said it's just all going so well. And I've been really proud of how we, how we help our, educate our special education students, but this time there were like three different gate parents that were really happy and said their kids were already being challenged. And sometimes they're a little part of the fleets, and they were happy. I also attended the event in Newport, the bullying event. And what I, one of the things that impressed me most was that the whole city of Newport works together. I mean, there are city council people, there's school board people, counselors, they're all working together for students. It's, it's much more combined. And there were people there from Irvine, from all over Orange County. One of the things that I'd like to look at, I guess at Carolina Delmar High School, middle school, high school, they have a program in the evening that is for students with anxiety, as well as students that have substance abuse issues, that, you know, the woman that runs the program was talking about. So of course, she said it was wonderful. I, I don't know, but she invited me to come see, and I invite if anybody else wants to go with me to see what it's like. So that, and I have something for Peggy from that. They also did a, a class at night on the bullying issue with a lot of the, like, Jerry Weitman was there, professors from SC, UCLA. Some of our parents actually went at night to the Newport, Newport bullying parent thing. And I happened to run into a couple that just had great things to say about it. So, I mean, it could be something, I keep hearing from the women who organized it, that when we're looking at problems, it is good to help each other and to all work together. And so for some of the parent topics to work together might be a good idea, and that's what I'm gonna do, thank you. Okay.
Thanks. Okay. When you were talking about class ranking, you're, you're looking for consensus on us.
No.
You're just making comments.
This is a high school.
It's not, it's not a board decision.
She's passionate.
Oh.
That, that was.
The administrators.
That's right. That, no, that was, yes. It's not, that's not our. People coming out of Dr. Weitman's lectures, really, really positive comments. People was really thrilled and said, having come back, I mean, it was really good to see that, to provide something that parents really appreciate. I did go to the back to school night at Elmoreo, and, and again, I seem to ended up in a room with Jason Fritz. And then Cyrus is in there, and Van is in there, so I'm like, so three of them together. They're having a great time. But it's always good to see enthusiasts, the teachers are sharing what they're providing with the students. After our meeting the last time, I was able to go to both the Thurston PTA, which was preceded Jenny's ping pong adventure. And she also had students present at the PTA meeting, which is great, because they were talking about what they're involved in and, and learning how to share in front of a group of adults. But then at the high school PTA, also to showcase our new student rep policy, which of course I messed up again, and I apologize by purpose of getting used to it, but just to be able to share our increased student involvements and representation of student voice at our meetings. And then somebody said something that, I guess, was just about class rank, because I read about the colleges taking a good look at the ACT, SAT, and whether it really is, so far, their information is that it's not an indicator of college success, and so how are they going to value that in the future? Did you see, University of Chicago is not even using it as part of applications, one of the top ranks, schools in the nation. So then, and then the last thing is, I did go, since we had Shawty come to our meeting recently, and then Whistler came to the city when they did that. I went down her event on Saturday, and, you know, it was, and spoke for a few minutes, just to, to let, I had sent her an email, I didn't know all the things that we do in our district. And that has, that has made a difference in our students, that, you know, because you've been around longer since we started, some of them being slightly turned accounts, and it's moved up, and that we are seeing there's open students in being kinder, and then also Jenny's emphasis here kind of starts here. So hopefully that's part of letting others know what, what they're doing. And that's, that's all. So our next meeting is Tuesday, October twenty-third, here at six o'clock, I asked for motion for adjournment, so I'm, all in favor? Piper?